Good morning, everyone. I am Atlanta City Councilmember Byron Amos, Chair of the City Council Transportation Committee. Wednesday, June 25th. I'd like to officially call the meeting to order. Have with me my colleagues, Councilmember Juan, Councilmember Dozier, and of course, our Vice Chair, Councilmember Cory Overstreet. Make a motion to adopt the agenda. Motion has been made in a second. Please open the vote.
The vote is open. The vote is closed. Foyer zero nays. Agenda has been adopted.
Motion to approve the minutes. Motion has been made in a second. Please open the vote.
The vote is open. The vote is closed. Foyer zero nays. The minutes have been approved.
Thank you. That takes us to public comments. Remind you, everyone will have three minutes to speak. In those public comments, I ask that you please keep your comments directed toward the committee and respectful to everyone in the room. First person would be Ms. Brooks.
Nice to see you all, and I'm sure you're sick of seeing me, but I'm going to read it because I get kind of a little over enthusiastic when I feel strongly about something. So I'm liking, I would like to speak to 25-0-1366. That's the extending month-to-month the micro-mobility contract or permits. I'm renewing my ask, which is to have a moratorium on deployment of the shared dockless micro-mobility devices until the vendors can actually make all the fixes that are necessary. So Propel shared with me a letter that they sent to you last week, and it underscores pretty much everything that I've been giving feedback on about the shared micro-mobility permits for the last seven years. So that letter points to the failure of the program and serious deficiencies, and there's a whole list of things that they indicate are key to the success of the program. I don't see that giving the vendors from now till April, I don't see that those will be resolved. And I, as a pedestrian, I'm just asking you, please to look out for me. I would also like to speak to 25R-3213, and that's the proposed, the resolution to put a crosswalk at Peachtree Center on Peachtree Road, Peachtree Street. So I have a simple and proven alternative that is safe and does not include crossing mid-block. So for decades along that block of Peachtree, there were decorative iron fences, maybe two feet high, that connected from tree well to tree well. And that directed pedestrians to the corners to cross safely in the crosswalk. So the tactical urbanism team removed those ornamental fences, those barriers to crossing mid-block, and essentially during Shared Peachtree, conditioned pedestrians to cross mid-block. And the tactical urbanism failed to restore those fences when the project was taken down. That's why there was that tragic loss of life, is there was no way, no, nothing preventing mid-block crossing. Crossing at the corner is a whole lot safer. Now, somebody knows where those fences are. I can't imagine they would have thrown them away, but it should be fairly straightforward and simple to just replace those barriers. They're pretty, they're effective, and they keep people safe. So thank you very much.
Thank you, ma'am. Next on the list would be Ms. Wondell Barlow.
Good morning. Good morning. I am new to the Atlanta area. I just moved in in Atlanta. I live in the Grove Park District. Since I've been there this past year, I have had numerous vehicles. I sit on my front porch, and I've counted 372 regular vehicles passing through the intersection of Holly Street and North Avenue in one hour. Since then, I've taken pictures, what I've bought with me. I have commercial vehicles, six-wheel, 12-wheel, 18-wheel, coming up and down the street from sunset, from sunrise to sunset or later in the evening. And I want a petition that we get speed bumps, speed signs, signs to prohibit these commercial vehicles coming through there because they are damaging our homes when they come through because of the weight of these vehicles. My homes and my neighbors' homes are just shaking constantly. I have reached out to Brian Amos's office. I have reached out to the Chief Bandalini in the District Zone One Police Department, trying to get some assistance. One vehicle came through the other day, knocked down a stop sign, left it. I had to call someone to come in and re-establish that stop sign at the four-way intersection. There is a school bus stop there, and with the number of cars coming through there, it's extremely dangerous. With the size of these vehicles coming through there, it's extremely dangerous for our children as well as the community. All of our neighbors are complaining. I've reached out to Atlanta 311, trying to get some assistance, putting in for such things as speed bumps, speed signs. I've even stopped some of the officers coming through, and they tell me, "Well, ma'am, we can't do anything because you don't have any speed signs. You don't have anything says that these vehicles can't come through here." And some of the commercial vehicles are parking in front of their homes, which is an eyesore, and it's restricted. We have an ordinance that states you cannot park a commercial vehicle in a residential area. They are parking on the sidewalks. It states you cannot park on the sidewalks, which is common sense, you know, for some people, but of course, we need to make it known. And we need to get some more police participation in the area, ticketing these vehicles. But I'm petitioning this arena for speed bumps, speed signs. How can you stop someone and say you're speeding if there's not a sign to indicate what the speed is supposed to be? And they're doing like 50, 60 miles an hour, barely stopping at the stop signs. It's extremely dangerous. My neighbor had her car parked in the front, or a visitor parked in the front. Truck came through, crashed right into her car. Accident at a, in the car was parked, actually. So I don't know where to go from or what to do, but I, like I said, I've reached out to Mr. Amos's office. His assistant operations manager is supposed to be getting me on his calendar, but I thought I'd come here and appeal my case, turning these pictures so that you can see the size of the vehicles that come across my front yard every day. This morning, I was almost late getting here because an 18-wheeler was held up on Holly Street trying to get out to Donald Lee Hollowell. Couldn't make the turn until all the traffic had left, had all of the traffic.
Ms. Barlow, use your overtime. Wrap it up for us, please.
Oh, thank you very much. Who should I give these to, Mr. Amos?
I'll send someone to you in one second.
Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you for coming down after speaking to me on Thursday and Captain Baldini. I'm glad you was able to come down to the committee. We did take it back and start doing some things, so we're on it. If someone from ATL DOT can get with her just to identify the stretch of street that she's talking about, we can start working on it. And thank you again, Ms. Barlow, for coming down. That brings us to the end of our public safety. Public comment. There we go. How to change committees and everything. It brings us to the end of our public, public comment area. Before we move forward, committee, there's an oversight that we made in last committee in which we had a community K we needed to take care of. And the mix-up was, we didn't do it. So Mr. Johnson, if we could take item number 31, so we can give the resident on, on back to.
Item number 31 on page 13, 25C 0067, and a communication from Councilmembers Dustin Hillis, District 9, Andrea Elboon, District 10, Marcy Coria Overstreet, District 11, Antonio Lewis, District 12, and Esha Collins, Post 3, at large, appointing Ms. Kimberly Wright to serve as a member of the City of Atlanta Americans with Disabilities Act Advisory Committee.
Ms. Wright. How you doing, ma'am?
Everyone, how are you?
Good. Before you start, let me apologize. I know we were supposed to do this last committee. I don't know what the mix-up was, but you're here. We're happy that you're here. But, you know, on behalf of the committee and of course, the city, thank you for returning to, to serve. So thank you. Go ahead.
My name is Kimberly Wright. I reside on Cascade Road in District 10, but I like to call it Tennis because I'm on the border of Marcy Overstreet's district and Andrea Boon's. I've been nominated to serve on the American with Disabilities Act. I had a master stroke in 2007, so I firsthand can just see things that really need fixing and doing throughout our lovely city. I'm born and raised in Atlanta. Some of you know me as Marvin Arrington Senior's niece and Marvin Arrington Junior's cousin, but I have extensive experience corporate America, private entrepreneurship, and I would just love to serve on this committee.
Motion has been made. In a second, please open the vote.
The vote is open. The vote is closed. Foyer zero nays. Item is favorable.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you for willing to serve and someone staff will be in contact with you. Moving down, thank you for that, team. We have presentation. Ashland Atlanta Department of Transportation wants to be super ready for us, so they're rescheduled to July 16th, so that will not be taking place today. Yes. That takes us to our public hearing in which I don't see anyone signed up for, so do I still need to make a motion to go into it? So I make a motion to enter into the.
Mr. Chair, before you make a motion to go on the public hearing, might I sound the caption?
Oh, yes. Go ahead.
Item number 1, 2501257, ordinance by Councilmember Ramirez Faroghi to rename Peace Avenue Northeast as Edna Moffett Street Northeast to waive certain provisions of Section 138-8 of the City of Atlanta Code of Ordnances and for other purposes.
Thank you. Now I make a motion to enter into the public hearing. Motion has been made in a second. Please open the vote.
The vote is open. The vote is closed. Foyer zero nays. The public hearing is now open.
We're in the public hearing. I don't have anyone to sign up. Second, motion has been made to close in a second. Please open the vote.
The vote is open. The vote is closed. Foyer zero nays. The public hearing is now closed. Mr. Chair, this item will need to be substituted. The substitute makes revisions throughout the legislation and removes Section 5 and attaches a memo of support from the old Fourth Ward Neighborhood Association.
Second, motion has been made in a second. Please open the vote.
The vote is open. The vote is closed. Foyer zero nays. The substitute is before you.
I move to approve. Motion has been made in a second. Please open the vote.
The vote is open. The vote is closed. Foyer zero nays. This item is approved on substitute.
So I'm being asked to double-check the, there may be a typo in the caption, so let's make sure we change that before it moves forward to council.
Go to it, Mr. Chair.
Okay. Thank you. That takes us to communications.
Item number 2, 25C 0080, communication from Councilmembers Liliana Batiari, District 5, Alex Wong, District 6, Howard Shook, District 7, Mary Norwood, District 8, and Matt Westmoreland, Post 2, at large, appointing Mr. Matthew Reeves to serve as a member of the City of Atlanta Americans with Disabilities Act Advisory Committee. Mr. Reeves had a scheduled conflict, so recommend motions to hold.
Second, motion has been made in a second. Please open the vote.
The vote is open. The vote is closed. Foyer zero nays. This item is held in committee.
Takes us to our consent agenda. First reads.
Item number 3, 2501391, an ordinance by Transportation Committee authorizing the mayor or his designated to execute the First Amendment to Agreement Number listed herein, security guard services with 2025 Atlanta Streets Alive Events with RLP Network LLC, respectively, on behalf of the City of Atlanta to add the Atlanta Department of Transportation as an authorized user for the use of, under the agreement, and to add funding in the amount not to exceed $1 million zero cents. All contract work will be charged to and paid from the fund department, organization, and account numbers listed herein and for other purposes. Item number 4, 2501392, an ordinance by Transportation Committee authorizing the mayor or his designated on behalf of the City of Atlanta to abandon and convey a portion of a public street known as Travis Street consisting of 0.016 acres lying and being a landlot 112 of the 14th District of Fulton County, Georgia, and being more specifically described and attached Exhibit A to Benjamin Dosor Terra, authorizing the mayor or his designated to execute a quick claim deed for such abandonment right of way and any other documents necessary to effectuate the abandonment and for other purposes. Item number 5, 2501393, an ordinance by Transportation Committee on behalf of the Atlanta Department of Transportation to amend ordinance 2301380, adopted by the Atlanta City Council on August 21st, 2023, and approved by the operation of law on August 30th, 2023, for the purpose of amending the list of project parcels attached as Exhibit B, thereto, and for other purposes. Item number 6, 2501394, an ordinance by Transportation Committee to ratify the City of Atlanta's submission of an application for the fiscal year 2025. U.S. Department of Transportation Safe Streets and Roads for all implementation grant on behalf of the Atlanta Department of Transportation for the implementation of the Vision Zero Action Plan in amount not to exceed $5 million zero cents and for other purposes. Item number 7, 2501395, an ordinance by Transportation Committee authorizing the mayor or his designated exercise renewal option number one, excuse me, renewal option number two for Agreement Number listed herein, annual contract for maintenance and repair of sidewalks, curbs, driveway aprons, ramps, and associated infrastructure with Knight and Associates Incorporated on behalf of the Atlanta Department of Transportation for a term of one year retroactively effective June 13, 2025, through June 12, 2026, in amount not to exceed $5 million zero cents to ratify any services rendered in the payment of any outstanding invoices from June 12, 2025, due to execution of the renewal option number two with all contract work to be charged to and paid from the fund department, organization, and account numbers listed herein and for other purposes. Item number 8, 2501396, an ordinance by Transportation Committee authorizing the City of Atlanta to waive the competitive procurement source selection provisions contained in 2-1187 of Article 10 Becoming a Real Estate Code of the City of Atlanta Code of Ordnances as well as any other conflicting co-provisions to include but not limited to Section 12-1292E to authorize the mayor or his designated to execute the First Amendment for Agreement Number listed herein, security access control system operations and maintenance at Hartsfield-Jackson Atlanta International Airport with Dean All Security LLC on behalf of the Department of Aviation to add services and funding in amount not to exceed $194,100 zero cents. All services will be charged to and paid from the account numbers listed herein and for other purposes. Item number 9, 2501397, an ordinance by Transportation Committee authorizing the City of Atlanta to waive the competitive source selection provisions contained in Section 2-1187 of Article 10 Becoming a Real Estate Code of the Code of Ordnances of the City of Atlanta, City of Atlanta, Georgia, as well as any other conflicting co-provisions to execute an amendment for Agreement listed herein, rental car operation and maintenance services at Hartsfield-Jackson Atlanta International Airport with Meridian Urban Joint Venture LLC on behalf of the Department of Aviation to extend the term of, on a month-to-month basis, for a period not to exceed six months beginning July 1st, 2025, to expire on or before December 31st, 2025, including additional funding to the overall contract in amount not to exceed $6,454,789.54 all contract work to be charged to and paid from the account numbers listed herein and for other purposes.
Thanks, sir. Before we move to our regular agenda, just want to announce we've been joined by our councilmember from District 12, Antonio Lewis. So that takes us to second reading, regular agenda.
Section J ordinance for second reading. Item number 10, Mr. Chair, this item requires a substitute. May we have a motion to bring forth a substitute in order to read the substituted caption?
Second. Motion has been made in a second. Please open the vote.
The vote is open. The vote is closed. Five yas, zero nays. Substitute before you. The substitute includes language to close out existing trust fund accounts for sidewalk waiver fees and to amend the capital finance budget, both in the caption and throughout the legislation. Item number 10, 2501365, a substitute ordinance by Transportation Committee authorizing Chief Financial Officer to create separate projects within the Capital Finance Fund to receive and expend revenue collected from sidewalk waiver fees for each of the 12 city council districts on behalf of the Atlanta Department of Transportation to close out existing trust accounts established for sidewalk waiver fees and transfer those funds to the projects created herein to amend the capital finance budget in the manner set out herein and for other purposes.
Is there someone that can speak to this? DC Burnberg?
Good morning. Deputy Commissioner Lenore Braun brought us to the Atlanta Department of Transportation. So this, if I understand correctly, is to set up all the appropriate accounts for the sidewalk waiver fees to come to. There's existing funds that also already were in place in accounts, and this legislation will also move those funds over into those appropriate accounts. And there's one account for each district. I'm happy to answer any other questions you might have.
Councilmember Juan?
Yeah, so I'm curious as to why the old system didn't work and why we need to do this. And then I also need, how do we find out what our current balances are that are being transferred over? So two-part question.
Absolutely. We can certainly provide the second part of that question. I know we have been provided that information. Not every district has those funds. My understanding is that we, when this originally was set up, not all the accounts were created. So that was one thing we needed to correct. And then the second part was that the funds need to be moved. Finance asks us to move the funds from the original accounts that were previously set up over into a capital fund so that they could be expended on the capital investments that we want to make. And that's, I'd have to lean on finance if I'm not getting that correct, but that's my understanding is it's just putting into the appropriate fund accounts that ATL DOT can then access along with the councilmember of that specific district to expend those funds.
I'm going to abstain on this one, y'all. I do have some question. I'm a little uncomfortable with the whole setting up, moving it into a capital fund because of the budget process we just went through. Capital fund side doesn't always show up as transparently in our budget deliberations. And oftentimes, I don't know, I'd rather see these be moving through the operational side of the House versus capital. But I'm happy to have a conversation with finance between now and Monday to get me comfortable with that. Also, will ask, since I am understanding this won't be on consent, so I'm going to go and put it, I'll make a motion to approve on condition. Condition is, you know, those of us that would like to talk to finance about this setup, get the opportunity to, but then also seeing the balances of the current funds per district ahead of time. So.
And if I may, it's actually in Exhibit B in the attachments is the fund balances that are being moved over by district.
Ah, okay. I do see that now. All right, so I'll take that condition off, but I still want the first condition on the motion. It is in the packet that I was, that they emailed out this morning. Yeah.
So I would second that motion, but we still have a speaker, so when deliberation?
Thank you, Chair Amos. I, this, I did, I was approached by Councilmember Liliana Batiari about this, and I'm supportive. I do think that sometimes if councilmember doesn't know exactly what the funds are being used for and the sidewalks actually were not put in in their area, you know, there are pros and cons to it all. I do understand, though, that you would like a better spot for it. But that's, that's what I think it's from. It came from Councilmember Batiari not knowing if she was getting her lion's share of a pot of, of funds available that came directly from projects with sidewalk waivers.
And that is my understanding? That within that district, it went into that account, and then it would move over. It's also my understanding that we would classify that as a discretionary fund, so the councilmember would have to actually authorize.
But we really like those.
Out of that district for it to be. So that's, that is the way that, my understanding is it's being set up to allow that control to happen at the council district level.
Correct. And I like that in that, you know, we'll be able to decide what to do with those waived funds, you know. But, okay. I'll talk to Councilmember Juan offline as well. Thank you.
So that's motion on the floor has been made. In a second, any more discussion? Saying now, please open the vote.
The vote is open. Will everyone please vote? Vote is open. The vote is closed. Five yas, zero nays. This item is favorable on substitute on condition. Item number 11, 2501366, an ordinance by Transportation Committee to waive Section 150-401D, Article 10, traffic and vehicles of the City of Atlanta Code of Ordnances to authorize the commissioner[1494.53] of the Atlanta Department of Transportation to extend the existence, shareable dockless mobility device annual permits on a month-to-month basis for nine months with a shareable dockless mobility device operator beginning July 1, 2025, and ending on April 1, 2026 and for other purposes.
DC Smoot-Madison.
Good morning, Council. Betty Smoot-Madison, Deputy Commissioner for Strategy and Planning with City of Atlanta Department of Transportation.
The best that you can give us, what's the holdup?
Okay, so this legislation will actually allow us to have an extension while we work through making some code revisions and amendments to move from a permitting structure that we are currently under. With the new RFP, we are looking to go towards a contract structure with one to two vendors. And so we have to make some code revisions. Currently, the code language speaks to permitting. We have to change that language to contract. And so we're working through legislation now, and that legislation should be coming probably in the next cycle to make those code revisions. And then we'll be able to move forward with RFP. The RFP right now, the package is pretty much ready to go with procurement. We just need to do these legislative items.
And next legislative item being prepared to be read into this coming Monday's council meeting?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. Councilmember Juan.
So the public comment that we heard at the beginning, I don't know if you were here or not, but it suggests that there are operators right now that aren't in compliance with the program. Can you speak to that?
I'm not aware of any operators not being in compliance, so we issue permits to them on a quarterly basis for all of their devices. If there are any parking issues, any parking issues can be reported to 311, and operators are required to respond to those 311 requests. They actually go directly to the operator, and we are copied on those. So the operators have two hours to respond to those, so I'm not aware of any noncompliance with that. We also do regular auditing, so our team goes out and actually conducts random checks at various locations just to see how parking is and if there's any noncompliance. And we, based on what we see out on the, out in the field, we coordinate with those operators to make adjustments, and they generally are very responsive.
What about max speeds and use on sidewalks?
Yes, so we have been working very closely with the operators to, they are testing different technologies that will do like sidewalk riding detection. They've had some challenges with some of the technology, so we haven't been able to deploy those here in Atlanta. But we are working very closely with them on getting better at managing that. We can do more education. Generally, the operators will include education in the app that tells the riders that they cannot ride on sidewalks. But you get people, if there's not bike infrastructure on those streets, you do get people that feel more comfortable riding on sidewalks and will do so. So we are working with the operators just to do more education, and we have some sidewalk decals that we are looking to deploy. So we're looking at various strategies, and those are things that we are building into the next RFP to make sure that operators are aware that these are issues we're dealing with and will be scoring based on that.
Ultimately, are those violations to the user or through, or to the company?
Are, sorry, say that one more time.
Ultimately, the sidewalk violations, are they to the user or to the company?
So they can be penalized, the user can be penalized, the operator has the ability to restrict them from, or even ban them from using if they are continuous violators. And so that ability is there. We do have the ability to restrict some of the permitting if we find that there's egregious violations to their permits.
Thank you.
Councilmember Dozier.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Quick question. I know there's a concern about where scooters are being left, and I say scooters, I know micro mobility devices as a whole. I know the Department of Transportation has been working to build out designated corrals, taking underutilized parking space and making that a kind of a designated area in which those can be stored or located. That's a real conversation with the providers to restrict the ability of a user to end a ride unless it's in a designated parking area. And what has that conversation looked like? Recognizing that, I know the city is building out infrastructure to support that, but then just a couple of weeks ago, I was at a ribbon cutting with the South Downtown folks and their partnership with Lime. Lime has a designated parking area that they just put in place with beautiful murals and all that sort of stuff. So I imagine there's some things that the providers themselves can do to ensure that there's designated parking locations beyond what the city's doing. So what does that conversation look like? And is that reflected in this RFP? Does, we can expect.
The next RFP, yes. So we have, to date, we have about 20 corrals that we've put out throughout the city in partnership either directly by ATL DOT or in partnership with the operators or even some of the CIDs. So we are looking to continue to build out those dedicated parking spaces and micro mobility corrals throughout the year. The operators have actually approached us with the willingness to also deploy a good number of corrals throughout the city, so we believe it's moving in the, in the right direction. Currently, a user is not able to end their ride. They have to take a picture of the device and show where it's parked. So they're not able to end that ride if the, if the parking is noncompliant or if it doesn't currently comply. So generally, that means it has to be on the edge of the sidewalk, either on the front or the back. But again, as we start to deploy more of these corrals, we'll be able to build into, or their operators will be able to build into their apps that they're actually parking them in those available corral spaces.
And I guess just some feedback for the providers then. I know a lot of our scooter usage or micro mobility usage is in communities that don't have CIDs, don't have, don't always have commercial districts. And so opportunities to identify those parking locations are relatively limited. And then bring that up because, you know, I went for a walk with my kids in the stroller yesterday evening, and the amount of scooters I had to navigate, and, you know, it was also trash day too, so it wasn't, there's a lot going on in Mechanicsville. But it's residential community, I was walking through the, there wasn't a lot of commercial in that area, but I still encountered scooter, I don't want to call them, call it litter, but scooters were parked improperly, scooter litter, but they were parked improperly. And so there's ways in which we can work with providers to minimize that, even in places in which there's no corrals or there's, there isn't like the commercial access. Like, these are one-off situations. I recognize that there's not a lot of uses, you know, they probably haven't looked at it in that way, but it continues to be an issue and it continues to be a large concern for people who are trying to just navigate our city in a safe way, so.
Yeah, that's good feedback. And we have done some surveying in the past, and we can bring that survey back and continue to push that out, especially to businesses, just to gather information around potential locations that may be good for corrals and parking. So we'll look into bringing that back, but definitely more dedicated or intentional engagement with residents and business owners.
And then on a similar note, just what the, what the city's been doing, has there been an exploration in how we are designing some of the pedestrian or bike safety improvements that we're implementing across the city to support the use of micro mobility? So I know we're talking about corrals, but as we design sidewalks, as we design intersections or bowl valves and intersections, have we, have we looked at accommodating the design work? Or have we looked at changing the design work to accommodate micro mobility uses, recognizing that it's a pretty ubiquitous use in our city at this point?
Yeah, one of the tools that we have available to us is a shared micro mobility data management platform, and so that essentially pulls all of the operator data into one place. We're able to see where there's high ridership routes, so where are those corridors where there's significant amount of people using micro mobility devices, also where they're starting their trips and where they're ending them. So we are using that data to help guide how we prioritize where improvements are made, whether it's bike infrastructure or pedestrian infrastructure. So we've built that into our prioritizations.
Okay. And just one last comment, you know, as I think about the work that we've done with MARTA, with other transportation operators, you know, you know, MARTA has bus stops, bus stations, bus shelters. There's some predictability in where you need to be or where to go to, to access a specific transportation node. I wonder if there's an opportunity to replicate that experience for micro mobility, even though it's being operated by third-party vendors. But even like when we think about the old relay bikes here that we had in the city, you had designated stations, designated stops. The more we can make utilization predictable, the easier it will be for enforcement. And so, so like I said, we're already doing part of that with the corrals. Vendors themselves are doing part of that by putting in more places in which you have designated parking areas, but operationalizing that and making that the standard, I think, will drastically alleviate the friction that we're seeing across the city with pedestrians and micro mobility, so.
Agreed.
Mr. Chair, I yield. Thank you, and next speaker, Councilmember Overstreet.
Yeah, I just wanted to double-click a little bit on the part where you say that we're using our tools that we have. I do believe we need more tools. I'm looking at some of the other cities and how they handle their micro mobility, and I, I think that we need to explore what some are getting right, because what I've noticed over the years is that we're probably getting a few of the bad actors because they can't operate in other cities, because of things like geo-fencing and some other, other tools that, that actually emphasize more on predictable behavior of the operator. And so I think that we could probably do a little more where that's concerned, and maybe, that may be a presentation opportunity. Chair Amos, because I do think that some cities are, they have way more tools than we do in making sure that they can, they better know what's going to happen with their, with, with their third-party vendors. And I think that, you know, we could do more with that too, because I also have witnessed, we don't have a lot in District 11, but when I do venture to walk in other areas, which I do often, or, or, you know, visit everywhere, and I'm visiting everywhere right now for a whole lot of reasons, there is a lot of, of scooter litter. And I think that we could do better with making sure that we can predict that behavior a little, a little more. And this is what I was asking Councilmember Lewis, that maybe another question would be, if we don't pass this month-to-month now, what's the alternative? Because this is dragging on.
So we do, so currently, the permitting legislation expired, expires June 30. And so again, we need this additional time to make the code revisions. I believe if we don't pass this, we just, there will essentially be a halt in our micro mobility offerings. And it is a viable transportation option for a lot of people. We've continuously exceeded the ridership levels year by year. So we are exceeding last year's ridership, which was at about 2.5 million trips. So there are a lot of people in Atlanta that rely on using these devices to get to work, school, and, you know, other destinations around the city. So it's critical to our transportation system.
I just don't like that, you know, it's the 25th and we're saying in five days this expires. You know, I don't think we should back ourselves up like that again. So.
So the, yeah, the legislation, the passed legislation does currently sunset at, on June 30.
I hear you. And I'm wishing that it didn't, or that we already had in place anything other than a month-to-month beforehand. But that's, this is where we are.
Yeah, I mean, we could maybe talk with DOL about potential options, but I think this is, this is really critical for us right now. And again, we have the RFP ready. We just need to make these code revisions.
Okay.
So I don't, I don't believe it will take the full amount of time. I think we extended it for nine months, so it's definitely not going to take that, that much time. But we're just needing to get through this process. And we're building in extra time to get through like the RFP process and anything that may come up during that time, scheduling evaluations. So those things tend to take a little time, so we're just building in some extra caution.
Okay. I yield.
We actually been joined by one of our other colleagues, Ms. Bakhtiari. You have a question.
Sorry, this question was about an earlier piece that I was named on, so we can wait until after this. I just wanted to ask, I wanted to make a question known to DCP to come back, and I wanted to make sure I asked the question for on the record. So I didn't know if Ms. Betty Smoot-Madison wanted to, DC Smoot-Madison wanted to finish first on this legislation.
Okay, so let's, let's do that. We have a motion on the floor that I second, but before we have a discussion, it just leads to a bigger problem that I haven't spoke about in a while, whether it's user in, users in, or whether it's procurement in. These month-to-months, I personally is getting tired of them, not speaking directly to you, just speaking to the larger audience. We have several month-to-months that talk about millions of dollars. We have month-to-months that put us in situations such as three days before a contract. I truly believe we know when a contract is going to expire the day that we sign it. How do we get to these points? So I don't know if it's the user agencies or if it's procurement, I don't know who it is, but administration, I need help to end these month-to-months. So we're going to start getting a lot of no votes from City Council District 3. So just putting that on the record, we have a motion on the floor that's been made and seconded. Please open the vote.
The vote is open. The vote is closed. Five yeas, zero nays. This item is favorable.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
I will ask, though, the department, when y'all decide to move forward with the RFP, the new construct, if it is going to be contract, I, I think we would like to understand that model. I'd like that before the RFP goes out, because once it goes out, we can't talk about it. Right? And I, right. And I also want to understand how it incorporates some, and addresses some of the concerns that we are receiving in terms of the operational challenges. So I'm going to make that request and let, if, if that can happen.
We can talk through it. I know there's a council work session scheduled in July for curb management, including micro mobility. So we'll be providing a more detailed update then, and so I think we can.
All right, I am, I'm just going to lean into, man, I hate that it's in July, but don't put us in a position where we can't talk about it because there's an RFP out on the street. So let's try and have that conversation before it goes.
Quick question. That, that work session will also, we are going to make sure that is not during the break, correct? Not during recess or it is during recess?
Well, actually, it's the On Street Parking Management RFP Work Session, July 9, 10 a.m. in this room. So July 9, 10 a.m. in this room, yes, I did ask them to just give us, because we can't have curbside management if we don't talk about, you know, micro mobility. So, okay. So thank you. Yes.
The earlier, I apologize, I caught the paper that I believe was walked in around sidewalk waivers. I did believe Councilmember Overstreet did bring up that this is something I wanted to, originated from waivers being given instead of that occurring to actually put that into a sidewalk-specific fund so that the, so that council members could actually work with constituents to fill in those, that last mile on those missing sidewalks, especially around high-traffic areas like schools, libraries, senior towers, et cetera. And I wanted to echo my concerns, I'm very happy about the legislation, but wanted to echo Councilmember Juan's concerns about making sure that this isn't through capital and that we don't lose our ability to actually influence it. And I will appreciate DCP to talk to me about how this will relate to administrative waivers, and if that is something we need to tackle separately. But I want to ask, I wanted to make sure that I got clarity on if this is going to replace administrative waivers, or are there going to be certain conditions still under which administrative waivers are given? So that is what I need clarity on. I am very happy about the paper, just we know that devil's in the details. So if I could, I just wanted to ask that on the record, so hopefully DCP can get back to us before we're back from break, before the next full council meeting. So, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair. I yield.
Okay, we have one question, no, Councilmember Lewis.
It would be to the sidewalk waiver that Councilmember Bakhtiari brought up. Is anyone from the Department of Transportation here can answer a few questions? We do know I have a sidewalk waiver fund in District 12, and currently is at a good rate. And I'm asking, how do people, is there a way we can set up meetings offline, or is there a way we can start accessing this fund for current projects?
Hi, Lenora Bromberg, Deputy Commissioner, Atlanta DOT Office of Engineering, and yes. And I think one of the things we'll have to figure out, I know with Councilmember Juan's questions about the actual accounts being set up, this paper was intended to make sure there's an account for each of the districts. There are funds that are available for some that have moved over into those accounts. They essentially are set up as discretionary accounts so that the department would work with individual council members to determine where those funds would be spent. I think there might be some questions about exactly which of those fund accounts it'll actually be at the end, but yes, sir, that is exactly what we would intend to do. And yes, you do have a balance that would be available and moving over.
So my next question is, would this slow down any projects that, if I'm already using funding from this sidewalk waiver fund? Or if in that time period, because we, we are working on a lot of sidewalk projects in District 12 currently, and like bringing sidewalk to Jonesboro Road finally. The only portion of Jonesboro Road in the City of Atlanta or in the state of Georgia without sidewalk is Jonesboro Road in District 12. So would that slow up that process of moving that sidewalk funding?
I don't believe it would, because the money's in an account that is accessible. So I don't believe it would. We certainly will make sure that that's not an issue, but as far as I'm concerned, the money is there and it's available. We're just making sure it's put into an appropriate location based on the direction I believe we receive from finance.
Thank you. I just didn't want to slow down any of our sidewalk projects that we currently have money already assigned for. Thank you again.
You're welcome.
Thank you. That takes us to our next item, item number 12, I believe.
Item number 12, 2501367, in honor is by Transportation Committee to amend Chapter 22, Article 3, Division 1 of the Code of Ordnances of the City of Atlanta, Georgia, to repeal Section 22-70, airside operating permit at Hartsfield-Jackson Atlanta International Airport and for other purposes.
Motion to approve. Motion has been made and seconded. Please open the vote.
The vote is open. The vote is closed. Five yeas, zero nays. This item is favorable. Item number 13, 2501368, in honor is by Councilmember Byron D. Amos, authorizing the City of Atlanta to waive the competitive source selection provisions contained in Section 2-1187, Article 10, Becoming a Real Estate Code of the Code of Ordnances of the City of Atlanta, Georgia, as well as any other conflicting co-provisions to execute an amendment for sole-source operations and maintenance contract automated highway transit system at Hartsfield-Jackson Atlanta International Airport with Allstom Transport USA Incorporated on behalf of the Department of Aviation to extend the term on a month-to-month basis for a period up to nine months, beginning July 1, 2025, to expire on or before May 1, 2026, in an amount not to exceed $27,499,990.0. All services will be charged to and paid from the account numbers listed herein and for other purposes.
Just for the record, we have another month-to-month extension. Motion to approve. Motion has been made and seconded. Please open the vote.
Item number 4, excuse me. The vote is, the vote is closed. Five yeas, zero nays. This item is favorable. Item number 14, 2501369, in honor is by Councilmember Byron D. Amos, authorizing the City of Atlanta to waive the competitive becoming sole-source election provisions contained in Section 2-1187 of Article 10, Becoming a Real Estate Code of the City of Atlanta Code of Ordnances, as well as any other conflicting co-provisions, to include but not limited to Section 2-1292E to authorize the mayor's designated, actually, the First Amendment to Agreement number listed herein, public safety systems, operation and maintenance with Dean O.P.S.S.L.L.C. on behalf of the Department of Aviation to add services and add funding in an amount not to exceed $9,118,656.63. All contract work will be charged to and paid from the account numbers listed herein and for other purposes.
Thank you. Is Ms. Brown here from the airport, someone who can speak to this? Safety.
Good morning, Jordan Beigler, Assistant General Manager, Operations for Department of Aviation.
Hey, sir, I think I know the difference, just want to be sure. The difference between this that we just read and then what we read on first read that speaks about the Lanell system, what is the difference between the two papers and the systems?
So the Lanell systems are access control. So the Lanell systems are access control, it's got the, a security badge, access through the card readers, that system, that's what the Lanell system is.
And this paper will cover what?
Let's see. This is CCTV, so yeah, the camera, camera system.
Thank you. Motion to approve. Motion has been made a second, please open the vote.
The vote is open. The vote is closed, five yay zero nays, item is favorable. Item number 15, 2501372, an ordinance by Councilmember Byron D. Amis to rename Baker Road Northwest to JW Williams Jr. Way Northwest to waive certain provisions of Section 138-8 of the City of Atlanta Code of Ordinances and for other purposes. Mr. Chair, this item will need to be held for a public hearing.
Second. Motion has been made to hold, and second, please open the vote.
The vote is open. Vote is closed, five yay zero nays, item is held in committee. This takes us to Section K Resolutions, item number 16, 25R3589. A resolution by Councilmember Byron D. Amis, Dustin Hillis and Marcy Colly Overstreet, authorizing the mayor or his designated enter into contracts, numbers listed herein, 2025 roadway construction and maintenance, large citywide, Agreement A, ATL Paving Joint Venture. Agreement B, BRTU Construction Incorporated and Caroline's Hall Incorporated Joint Venture. Agreement C, GS Construction Incorporated and Lewis Contracting Services. Agreement D, Stewart Brothers and P2K Joint Venture to provide construction services to the Atlanta Department of Transportation on a task order basis for an initial term of three years with two one-year renewal options to establish a joint task order fund in amount not to exceed $121,000.00, with all funds to be charged to and paid from the project and account numbers listed herein and for other purposes. Mr. Chair, this item will need to be held for, in order to receive the IPRO report.
That's, motion has been made, is there a second? Motion has been made a second, I do have a question, so it should be held, held to attach to IPRO report.
Correct.
This, to the department, this will not slow down any paving projects, will it? Okay, they're shaking their head, just for the record. Motion has been made a second, please open the vote.
The vote is open. Vote is closed, five yay zero nays, item is held in committee. Item number 17, 25R3593, a resolution by Councilmember Michael Julian Bond, authorizing the mayor or his designated to execute the First Amendment to Project Management Agreement with Path Foundation Incorporated doing business as Path for the West Side Two Trail Project on behalf of the Atlanta Department of Transportation, in amount not to exceed $475,440.00. All contract work will be charged to and paid from the Fund Department, organization and account numbers listed herein and for other purposes. Mr. Chair, this item requires an amendment, the amendment attaches Exhibit A, which is the project management agreement.
Motion has been made a second, please open the vote.
The vote is open. The vote is closed, five yay zero nays, the amendment has been approved.
Motion has been made a second, please open the vote.
The vote is open. The vote is closed, five yay zero nays, this item is favorable as amended. Item number 18, 25R3595, a resolution by Councilmembers Eche Collins, Antonio Lewis, Michael Julian Bond, and Matt Westmoreland, supplementing a task order fund in amount not to exceed $482,860.00 for use under contract number listed herein, Sustainability On Call Airport Services at Hartsfield-Jackson Atlanta International Airport with ATL Sustainable Aviation Partners, 2035 joint venture, a joint venture for the Department of Aviation on a task order basis, all services will be charged to and paid from the account numbers listed herein and for other purposes.
Motion to approve. Motion has been made a second, please open the vote.
The vote is open. The vote is closed. Five yay zero nays, item is favorable.
Next item?
Mr. Chair, item number 19 requires a substitute, the substitute changes the caption, but we have a motion to bring forth a substitute.
Motion to bring forth substitute, is there a second? Motion has been made a second, please open the vote.
The vote is open. The vote is closed, four yay zero nays, one extension.
The substitute is forced?
Correct. Item number 19, 25R391, 39, 3596, a resolution by Councilmember Mira Farokhy, substituted by Transportation Committee. Resolution authorizing the mayor's designated on behalf of the City of Atlanta to execute an agreement between the City of Atlanta and Emory University to set funds for the installation of a pedestrian crosswalk on Linden Avenue Northeast between P Street Street Northeast and West P Street Street Northeast, pursuant to the standards and prescribed evaluation methods used by the Atlanta Department of Transportation and for other purposes.
Motion to approve. Motion has been made a second, please open the vote.
The vote is open. The vote is closed, four yay zero nays, one extension, this item is favorable on substitute.
Thank you, Councilmember Juan.
Mr. Chair and colleagues, I'm standing on this because I'm employed by Emory University and they're part of this legislation.
Thank you. Next item?
Item number 20, 25R3653, a resolution by Transportation Committee, authorizing the Commissioner of the Atlanta Department of Transportation to execute Amendment Number 3 to Agreement Number listed herein, Cascade Road Avenue Streetscape and Signal Installation with Matthews-Kelly Joint Venture on behalf of the Atlanta Department of Transportation for additional 365 days, giving a new completion date of July 6, 2026, with no additional funding required and for other purposes.
Councilmember Overstreet?
I would like someone to come up and be specific about what the extension would be for. Hi, so is there a map to show exactly what the extension would be for? Because 365 days is a long time. And it's already, you know, this project started in 2021.
Lenora Bromberg, Deputy Commissioner of Engineering for ATL DOT, so this is just to do a standard time extension? So a year was picked, this does not impact the schedule that we've been working on with you for the Cascade Road project? So it is, the phase is under construction now, the contract expires, so we're doing a one-year extension, but that does not mean that's the end of the construction, so that schedule is still as we've had it. And the, this is, this, the, the way the contract is set up, it allows for a one-year renewal to extend it. And so that contract just takes that date and moves it out for one year, based on the stipulations in the contract.
Okay, so I'm apprehensive to, to actually approve a whole year extension. I'm sure the community doesn't want me to do that. And I don't want it to give the appearance that I'm fine with this timeline. So what's your alternative to that? Because I'm, I'm, I'm not in agreement that it should be a whole nother year.
I'm not, I'm afraid I can't answer that question, because it's a contract issue. And the terms of the contract just give the one year, I'm not sure what our options are.
Okay, move to whole.
Can get that information for you.
So what exactly would you like to get in regards to the information? I, I really, I want a more specific piece of legislation that pinpoints exactly which portions we are extending. Because this is saying that the Cascade, the Cascade Complete Streets project is extended for a whole nother year. And that is not palatable at this point.
Yes, ma'am, so this is just the, the contract with the contractor?
I understand, I get it.
Again, it's, it's the term, so I'm not sure I'd have to get.
I get it, I think that we need to go back to the contract and maybe put in language that talks about what's already been completed and which portions we're, we're extending. Because I know for sure that a whole year of a contract extension is something that just doesn't seem like we should be doing right now with this project. It's painful.
Understood, again, it, it's a contract term, and I don't know that we have the right to change that without a whole nother process. So we will certainly look at that, I just, we, it is important that it continues forward, so the contractor can continue working.
They have until, this, when does this contract expire? The current one?
It's July 5th.
July 5th, well, we have. Four days, a couple of days. Y'all come up with anything else?
John Goll with the Law Department?
Okay.
This legislation is to Amendment 3, this is to, for council to accept and, and acknowledge work that's already been performed on this contract. Is my understanding of the amendment. And, and as far as the completion dates go, that, once this extension is ratified or approved by council, the department in law can work with the contractor to set a substantial completion date, pulling back that, that term period anyway. So we, this just gives the, the procurement, finance, and the department the opportunity to pay the funds for work that's been performed.
Yeah, that's not my understanding of this legislation in any way, actually. That's not how I'm reading it, I'm, I'm reading it as a contract extension, that we're exercising the extension, so that this project would be, would be legally okay to continue for 365 more days. And that's just not something that I'm interested in.
We can, however we wish to do, we could proceed and provide additional language to provide a date certain at, at full council, or we can hold it and revise it.
I am open to even a map, like I said, actually being specific about which portions the extension would include. We're at a critical point with this, with this project. We've had seven in-person community meetings. And actually doing a paper that's so broad, that says 365 days is permitted to continue this project, is just not something that I can support at this point. It has to be better language. Because we don't have to always extend a contract. That's just not, you know, as, that's the whole purpose of having extensions, to come before council, it may not be going right.
Yes, ma'am.
And this is not going right. So what happens here?
Good morning, Councilmember Theo Pace, Deputy Chief of Staff. I was, happened to be watching the committee meeting, I do actually had two questions similar to yours, so I heard that the contract expires on the 7th. You all go to recess, I believe your last meeting is on the 7th as well. Would it be possible to forward this without a no recommendation or on condition to committee, to the next council meeting, which will allow for another week to maybe have some discussions? Then if you still have some concerns, to possibly hold it in the breast of council?
What exactly would, do you think you would be doing to make my concerns more, more valid on this legislation?
So I didn't hear, I was walking over, I didn't hear Law's comments, but I don't know if reducing the 365 days is feasible. I'm not sure, actually, I have some questions about it myself, so.
I can, I can repeat what's, what's important to me. It's important to me that we not extend the portion of Phase 1 that is actually in, under construction for the last five years. It's, it's important that that is not extended for 365 more days. It's important that there is a map provided on which portions the extension will actually be encompassing. It's also important that we, well, those are enough, but certainly not just the totality of the Cascade Complete Streets, Cascade Road and Avenue for 365 more days. That's, that's just not something that we should be doing right now. Just one second.
John Goll with the Law Department, we can work with the contractor, with the OP, with the administration to set a, a substantial completion date well within the 365, based on current schedules that have been communicated to, to council.
Okay, so I will offer an amendment that our contract extension is for six months. And you take that to CW Matthews and see if that is fine with them, if not, we, we're just at an impasse. And six months takes us to the end of the year.
Understood.
There's a motion on the floor that has been made a second. I'm pleased to open the vote.
The vote is open. The vote is closed, five yay zero nays, the motion to amend is approved.
Thank you. Oh, move approval on amend, move approval as amended.
Motion has been made a second, please open the vote.
The vote is open. Will everyone please vote? The vote is closed, five yay zero nays, item is favorable as amended.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Space. Next item?
Item number 21, 25R3654, a resolution by Transportation Committee, authorizing the mayor or his designated on behalf of the City of Atlanta to execute an encroachment agreement with Southern Telecom Incorporated for the installation and attachment of one eight-inch fiberglass cable conduit to house 1,728-count and 432-count fiber optic cable on and/or underneath the Ivan Allen Jr. Boulevard Bridge and the Ivan Allen Jr. Boulevard right away, located on Ivan Allen Jr. Boulevard, Northwest, Atlanta, Georgia, 30308, and for other purposes.
No need for anyone from ATL DOT to come and speak to this, but just going back to the general issues, we have heard about cable and fiber installment. When they bring it out of the ground, that black dirt, they, we need a better time schedule when they're coming back repairing our sidewalks and our streets. So motion to approve. Motion has been made a second, please open the vote.
Mr. Chair, can you repeat the second, or?
It was Councilmember Lewis.
The vote is open. The vote is closed, five yay zero nays, item is favorable. Item number 22, 25R3655, a resolution by Transportation Committee to authorize the mayor or his designated to execute an agreement for engineering design services with, for Moreland Avenue and DeKalb County, sorry, excuse me, DeKalb Avenue Interchain Scoping Study. Public project information number listed herein with Pond and Company on behalf of the Atlanta Department of Transportation for a term of two years with one, one year where no option, in amount not to exceed $299,933.00. All contract work will be charged to and paid from the Fund Department, organization and account numbers listed herein and for other purposes.
Motion to approve. Motion has been made a second, please open the vote.
The vote is open. The vote is closed, five yay zero nays, item is favorable. Item number 23, 25R3656, a resolution by Transportation Committee on behalf of the Department of Aviation to amend Resolution Number 22R3435 adopted by the Atlanta City Council on May 16, 2022, and approved per City Charter Section 2-403 on May 25, 2022, to add additional funding sources to Agreement Number listed herein, Parking Operations and Management Services and for other purposes.
Motion to approve. Motion has been made a second, please open the vote.
The vote is open. The vote is closed, five yay zero nays, item is favorable.
Next item?
Item number 24, 25R3657, a resolution by Transportation Committee. Committee, supplementing, supplementing a joint component guarantee maximum price fund in amount not to exceed $49,512.00 for use under four on-call construction management at-risk contracts for services at Hartsfield-Jackson Atlanta International Airport. All services will be charged to and paid from the account numbers listed herein and for other purposes.
Motion to approve.